Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 26th meeting of the Sag Harbor Village Historic Preservation and Architectural Review Board. And let's start opening the meeting by saluting the flag. So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, which was December 8th, 2022. Motion to approve the minutes. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have a continued public hearing for 207 Madison Street. Are there representatives from Madison Street here? Please come forward and tell us who you are.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. Tiffany Stoll, 55 Division Street, for the applicant. We had some revised plans for you this evening. I know that the applicant is young, but the last meeting was probably back in December, the last time we met. Unfortunately, I was ill, so it didn't intend. And I know there were significant comments about the proposed addition. We have made some substantial changes, so I'm going to turn it over to the architect to explain those changes to you. And then we have a couple of other things. He also submitted a comparison of other properties in the village that had modern additions as well as a presentation.
You can share.
Yeah. So all of them could be modified.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry, my name is. Pay a lot of attention to your last comment. To keep us in the front seat of the house. So the main thing that you guys were so right about was the extension of the addition to solar. So the first one was reducing 22 feet, the length of the addition. By doing this, we still get like the front of the house. We pretty much don't see anything from the street. And also, we try to melt the language and the materials to the existing house. So we reduce the amount of flat work. We add more single material and stone materials. This is the basement part. So all the materials are coming from the existing house. So the language is very similar. So. Yeah, so from the front, we still see the existing house. We think that is also important. And the only thing we can see a little bit in the back is the volume. It's a small volume. That has ivy, but I will explain it when I'll see this. So it's hidden behind that.
Shots.
Yeah, when you see the front of it, it's still light. And then there's two little volumes, the one that is on the side.
Too weird.
Okay.
So this is just.
There we go.
So the ivy that is right now.
I've never heard a young man like to use that term.
This is different than that.
Right.
Yes, so, so I think what you did say and you did do is you reduced the width of the addition. So doesn't it protrude past sightlines from the street?
No, it never did.
It never did?
It would never did, and it was never a problem from the street.
All right.
But it was only in that way that it was still too long.
Okay.
For the addition.
Right.
So we reduced it 22 feet. Which is by. I don't work. No, it's an L. No, because I think we just grew slightly some of the volumes from made them like a little bit thinner, a little deeper. We're still respecting, well, you can see the plan now. We're still respecting the pyramid rule and the setbacks and everything. We are not, even we're less, we're passing less pyramid rule than we had in the previous version. So we, and we still don't see pretty much anything from the street, which was also one of the important things. So 22 feet less, so you can see that the proportions make much more sense right now. So this is one important thing. And the second thing is the materials. We remove the glass facade and then we try to melt the same materials that we have in the former house. So we have singles that we bring into the two roofs. We have the stone or the pedestal basement part that we bring in on the second volume. And then we have the wood that we have already in the deck. So this is why we're bringing these little bridge sections. The windows. So the amount of glass is just for the windows right now. And then we have a more traditional facade. And then the other thing, we had a beautiful ivy. Now on the side that we cannot see, but we're going to transplant it. We'll transplant as much as possible to the new addition. So this is the concept, why you want this volume with ivy. And also this volume is the only thing that you would see on the street a little bit, the volume on the right. So instead of seeing like a big architecture, you will see. A wall with ivy. The wood wall. No, no. I'm looking at greater. So if I walk a little bit, three feet up the street. Now I'm the. Okay, thank you. Great, so now we're three feet up the street. Yeah, this is like the edge of the fence, so you would see grass. Grass is growing up on the side.
That's ivy.
Ivy, yeah.
To obscure, to obscure the extension.
What is the ivy climbing on? What is that material of that wall?
It's a stone. I thought it's the same material we're having already in the basement of the house.
Is it stone?
No, she said ground.
Ground.
Sort of rough.
Fired, fired edge.
Having a stone structure seems.
Choked out.
Sag Harbor doesn't have stone houses. So, or very few.
Well, we, first of all, it's the same. Same design. What we're doing is just moving the line. It's in stone and says higher. So it's nothing foreign and it's covered by ivy. That's the, yeah, so the idea is that you don't see. And you want it to disappear.
So this picture, it looks like the stone ivy structure kind of jets out.
Yeah.
But then in the final picture, it doesn't jet out at all.
No, it does.
So how many feet is it jumping out?
It's coming up from the line of the house in plan. Which was a grand institutional.
Doesn't it look like it's not shutting out here?
Yeah.
Nice. You can see it's what it is.
That's on the render, you can't really see like every.
So the line of the main volume, you see? Right now, this is actually the line we respected for waiting pass of line. So the deck that we have is our room.
So this is, let me show you this if I can. This perimeter, this is the end of the main line. Now, I'm just using the walkway as an example, but you see that jets out. It does move out a bit from the extended line of this front walkway. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a couple of feet apparently.
A lot of information.
It all looks like it's one from the back. Okay, so that's why I was.
Right, so this is, this is, I don't know how many feet it is. But it's. I don't want to use a modifier. It's, it's. Everything else is behind it, right?
Yeah.
So this is not that far off of the original sightline.
Yeah.
But this volume here is substantial, as you observed, but it's not, it's all obscured by the ivory and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, last weekend, we were encouraged to grow. So we followed your instructions to grow a little bit to the front and stretch the house, which seemed to be the main problem. So this is, but we didn't grow farther than the limit of the house. If you see the blue lines, that's our limit, the existing house, we didn't pass that line. So I think that's important to keep in mind.
Do we factor in the site of this property from Jermaine Avenue at all? Does that matter? Because the property that's on the corner of Jermaine is up for sale and they've done a lot of clearing in the back. And you can see their, this property's backyard like extensively.
They can see.
So is it going to be? So this is the second house on Madison Street on that block. So if you're walking up Jermaine, then you can see the backyard of this property behind the property that's for sale right now and will maybe be kind of demolished.
There is already a perimeter planting plan that has been approved by this board, which the client is trying to put in. Also, I don't know what the neighbor is planning on doing over there, but I'm assuming they're going to have to do all as well.
Right.
They will also have to put in some type of screening.
Yeah.
But right now, there is a perimeter planting plan that ever dreams of completely surrounding the property. So I don't think.
Okay.
The visual impact from Jermaine would be minimal, particularly if that person decides they're going to build some very more traditional.
Right, yeah. I think I personally made the suggestion last time that the back addition could be one story, but I think two stories is too daunting for this village.
For this piece here.
Yeah.
I was, also, I agree, I was going to ask you the height of that part of the addition. Is it taller than the, or as tall as the historic house?
So the top of the roof.
It's as tall.
It's.
As tall.
And then the.
I think we prefer that they be lower.
This last page in your.
No, actually, the ridge of the, the ridge of the original house is taller than the.
Look, see this ridge? That ridge. I'd show them, maybe there's a difference, I don't know.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I mean, you can see on this one. Yeah, please do.
I'm just saying that the massing, aside from the scale, the size of what you're proposing, but the massing of it, the forms components and the materials, none of those ingredients are harmonious with the existing wooden house. So those are, those are issues. Just as a design, rather compelling, it's modern, but I can see it as an extension.
So our house got, that was already on the house in the basement.
In what form? As a foundation.
But you can see it.
Okay, so the use of stone as a foundation and an extension is the harmonious and consistent with what is there. The use of stone for the entire cultivation is not consistent in terms of material with what is standing. So that's where the harmony comes in. And the roof line, the roof lines are different, not that they're wrong.
Different all over the village. And we did submit a neighborhood review of other houses.
Let him finish his point, please. Let him finish his point before you respond.
We're not doing a survey of the village. We're talking about this property. We're talking about this house and the roof lines of this house. Not that other roof lines exist throughout the village. This is an extension of a single house, a single building. And for those extensions, the proposed extensions, to present massing and roof lines and materials which are distinctly different from this house presents an opportunity for discussion.
It does certainly present an opportunity for discussion. And I believe that the board has a copy of the neighborhood review that the client did with respect to other houses in the village that have modern additions on the back that aren't necessarily made of the same materials.
Okay.
Building of 162. And I absolutely understand what you're saying, but at the same time, this board, as every other quasi judicial board, is subject to their own precedent.
So let's go.
Excessive dissimilarity is something that is could totally mention with respect to architecture. And so the idea that every historic home has to have a phony historic looking addition on the back is probably exactly the opposite of what the code was trying to do when it was adopted.
So let's go back to this slide, the previous one, where you circled the, the. No, I think you're going in the wrong direction. This one, okay. So what is the material of the house in the rear? Because it looks very similar to the, to the, to the original house.
But it is a completely different color. It's completely, for all intents and purposes, from a viewshed perspective and from any, you know, layman's perspective, it's a completely different material, whether it's beaten or not, it's a big difference. And materials, colors do matter. So if you're saying a change in material is the issue, you know, materials can be all different colors and all different types.
I'm not sure I can answer. Is it a different material or is it a different color of the same material?
I don't know. I can't tell if actual or not, whether it's already planted or real wood shingles. I can't tell.
But you see it when you drive by.
Yeah, and are we talking about just that flat roofed extension?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, well.
It's connected by some type of.
It looks like it's covered with cloppers.
Looks like it's one story.
I don't believe it's.
Okay, so let's go through your slide presentation. When, that's the kind of the back, that's something that's not visible from the street. So I don't think that that applies to this discussion.
It's a different, I think.
I mean, it's a different. We did have.
Yeah, that's a different house, but she's gone to different houses on, on, she's gone to 254 and 156 Madison and 162.
Near but have additions.
Right.
Oh, right. I think this was an effort to, to show, illustrate to the board that some additions do protrude outside the corners of the house.
So, but this is an example where it looks like the additions are reflecting the same materials as, as the front of the house.
Except this is a hip roof and the original house is a cable roof and there's certainly a contrast there.
So it's a completely different design element. I mean, it may be the same materials and the same type of windows, but the design of that is significantly different.
I thought Zach was talking about a stone facade versus a wooden facade. So I thought he was talking to materials.
And just materials in general.
Right.
Quite a bit of glass going on in this. I mean, just the design of what's being proposed may unto itself be aesthetically pleasing or interesting or something. I'm just looking at adding it to what is standing. And there's kind of a significant contrast between the front symmetrical wooden cable roofed house and this flat, looking rather flat roofed glass and stone.
The pitch of the roof is the same.
Mm-hmm.
The same.
They are the same.
Same, same.
Not your connectors, they're flat.
Yeah. Um, okay. I can say my opinion on that. I, I can tell you the story behind it. I am from Europe, right? And I worked in here, I was working in Spain, I mean, Italy, Milan for many years. And we did a lot of additions to historical buildings and some of them, they have like 1,000 years, right? I think the golden rule is never copy and paste exactly what you have. It's really the, what they tell you, like, is the basic goal to follow. And always make a transition that you find, this is what we expect to, respectful of your original house, but you're going to add something that is boring. And I fully disagree also, and I think this is our ambition and I know this is a different story here, but. And that the copy and paste something that is exactly there is not the default, to proceed. It's mainly finding a language that adjusts well to the existing that has like 100, 200 years, which is beautiful. And also, it's useful, it's according to 2023, you know? So you're not going to find, if you copy exactly the house and paste it, you're never going to have a house that is livable for this year. You will adjust it, but it will have certain problems. So I don't think, I don't believe that's guaranteed. I think you respectfully stick with what exists there, but also the town needs to grow in a smart way to, you know, so people understand, like, what is the next step? What is, what we can do to accommodate houses without copying and pasting the same house.
So just let me respond to that. We have led a lot of, we have approved, without question, a lot of avant garde designs. Very square houses, modular houses, all that sort of thing. But they're not in the historic district. So it's the historic district that separates you from a more general and less specific kind of design review and comment. So, and, and you know, what you've done in the ancient cities of Europe is very different here. We're governed by expectations of the federal government. So I hear what you say, we don't necessarily disagree. I do commend you. I do know that you really reduced the glass surfaces significantly in the building from what it was before. And I think you have done some modifications. But this is not, it's not a contest, it's a discussion. And so I want us to keep an open mind and listen to each other as opposed to debating each other.
And we certainly do not advocate cutting and pasting. In fact, we specifically say, do not try to reproduce something that looks exactly like a historic building, because then you are creating Disneyland or something. We do not want that. And we do want it to be differentiated and obvious, what's the old house and what's the new house? So mainly, the discussion is how to have a modern addition that we can all live with and that is comfortable and nice looking and.
Yeah, exactly, that's our goal also. And I feel like using same materials, same roof lines, same proportions, same window proportions. This is, I think this is the language I want to play with to create something like that. Following exactly the line between the stone and the singles, I don't think it's, I think that's copy and pasting. I think that's going to make the extension look more, blends better with Sag Harbor. But I don't think there's a point in copying those type of things. Respecting, again, expecting lines, heights, materials, shapes, plastic, like proportions of windows. I think that makes sense. So I don't, I don't see why this would work out.
So you mentioned a lot of things that we haven't questioned in your response. We're just asking you about a dissimilar use of a material that's used as a foundation material that you plan to obscure anyway. So can you think of any alternatives that would serve the purpose of supporting these evergreen ivory? And what differences? I'm just curious, why, why are you so, why are you so excited?
The attempt is to obscure anything that's protruding outside the sightline from the front yard. And, you know, if we were to change that into shingles, the ivy is not going to stick to that. Or it's going to destroy it in the process.
Why is, I, I'm just curious why ivy is such a paramount issue.
The board is so kind with it protruding and it being wood shingles, I guess that's a different story, but without any.
The original house has lots of ivy all over the back section, she says, it's all over.
Maintain that ivy and replant it and reuse it so it sticks with the property.
Why could it not climb on a trellis? Or you, if you think of Romney Cremoris's store in the village, it's entire ivy all over the whole side. And it's not stone.
There's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done there.
Right.
Well.
That you want to, I believe, I've been through the idea on the.
Yeah, you have to replace the shingles every couple of years.
Yeah.
So it's going to be covered by ivy. What is the whole, this whole conversation about sometimes you're not going to see, you're going to see ivy, which is.
Well, that's right, it goes both ways.
Yeah, why go to all the trouble and expense?
Also happens to be already in the house. So why is, we cannot do something that is already in the house?
So I went to a school they call Little Ivy University. And the buildings were built, you know, by slaves. So there was ivy in those bricks, buildings. There was ivy on the limestone, right? So what do you think about a brick?
In limestone? Is that right?
Yeah.
That's going to look very similar.
I mean, a brick, I mean, I see that you've painted your chimneys.
I think, okay, I think maybe you have.
And using limestone, you're still, it goes against your own argument right there.
I don't think that's not ideal for mine. It's like something messy or like, it's not going to look like a foundation. The pieces of it's going to be nicely layout. It's going to be a.
Honed? Or is it going to be rough? Or is it like a honed piece, like blocks?
It's going to be a rough stone.
Rough stone, that's.
It's going to match that which is currently existing there around the.
But it's there as a foundation, it's not a house material.
That's not necessarily true. I have to disagree with that only because I have the same type of stone on the sides of my house in the village and the historic neighborhood. And so I have.
Really, I'm very curious which house is left?
It is right down there.
Is a stone house?
Yes, most of it is stone.
Eighty five, I'll check that out tomorrow, eighty three.
I'll tell you where I live. If I see a car out there, exactly, I'll see it.
Well, no, by the way.
Maybe.
So, but the issue here is we don't, the village doesn't have masonry houses. It has masonry, village halls and commercial structures and public structures, libraries, you know, it's that. But the tradition of housing, of residential structures in the village is largely wood.
Largely wood, not altogether.
Fun. In this particular case, this is a little, this is a one-story wooden house. And it sits on a stone or a brick foundation. That's common. But houses don't have stone-backed extensions. That's not a tradition. And if it can be done in a pleasing, harmonious way, fine, I mean, that's, that's all for discussion. But if we're looking at the construction traditions in the village, building in stone with glass-clad connectors is not a good starting place. Just because the concept doesn't kind of fit. And I would suggest that your experience that you've brought into the conversation has not been in other countries with wood-framed houses.
So let's, just my opinion.
Some of that might not. What if you just reduce the stone to some sort of an apron? Whether it's four foot, five foot high and wrapped it and then did the rest? And I like the design myself, but that's my opinion. But would that be acceptable to you guys if they did, you know, chest-high stone around it? And then another material that would. Well, because the property drops off, which enables you to get a two-story addition on the back of a one-story house, I think there must be a grade difference. Otherwise, you'd be going off the streets. It's a one-story house.
If we are like, if we think the same way, we're still, the addition has, it does something. The floors are not, the floors are starting to addition on the, on the existing house. So if we keep the same line, it's going to follow like what you said, like a rock, like pork or something?
Yeah, well, that's what I was sort of getting at, because I'm thinking, in effect, your foundation, you can have an elevated foundation in the back. So in other words, the grade drops. So if you, if your foundation. So if your foundation kind of has a straight level going toward the back, where the house drops. Now your foundation is higher, and it would be something along what you're saying.
Right, that's an interesting idea.
I mean, that's.
That's a good idea, yeah.
It doesn't drop off that much.
It drops, it doesn't drop. The thing is that.
It drops a little, doesn't it?
You see some of the cellar, so you have to walk up like these steps to go to the.
To the front.
On the existing house, but not in addition. Addition is like ground floor. So that's why you see a living stone. Now we think it's quite interesting anyway.
So, all right, so does anyone on on the board want to, this is public comment too, right?
Yeah.
So we have used thirty-five minutes here, but.
It's only about four feet difference in the, in the whole lot, so.
Oh, I have a question, which is an entirely different area, which is these chimneys. No, I'm I'm relaxing about the shutters. Uh, the chimneys on the old historic house appear to be massive. Um, is there a reason? I mean, it's, aren't they a bit out of proportion, Zach?
Is that the way they are, or?
Okay, so they're, they're, they're not old.
So they were rebuilt.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, so let's open this up to the comment, the public, the viewers. Is there anything anybody wants to comment?
Anybody on Zoom?
Can they unmute themselves, or do we have to? Okay, you can unmute yourself if you have any comments. I guess not. Okay. Thanks. So this is a, anything else that we should discuss? Anything other points that you want to make? You heard about the suggestion of extending the foundation. You said that's kind of acceptable to you. All right.
I still think that you should make it one story in the back.
Yeah, that's, that's not for the project.
That would fit into the village.
But it's a two-story.
There's a lot of two-story.
Yeah, but the back, this crazy addition should be one story. It didn't look like it. But thank you for your candor.
Okay.
I I agree that in the, in the, in the, in an ideal world, that would be a shorter and smaller addition altogether.
It is now a shorter and smaller addition than it was when we first.
Yeah, I I appreciate that.
I think you can go further.
So we have, we have a moment before you make a formal application, right? We've just commented on it, and you come back to us. I thought that, I said, public comment, public hearing, no?
It is, but it's part of it.
All right. Do you guys want us to take a vote on this?
Well, if you have particular, um, suggestions for us to go back with that, oh, I've just got to pass the client money and for us to come back and you say no, um, do you be happy to do? Frankly, it does fall whether anyone in your life, if you're not, it costs tremendous amount of money to revise plans for you to factor, so.
We appreciate it, but our time's not reimbursable either. Okay, thank you. But yes, yours is.
If the suggestion is to bring the stone up to, to meet, and I just want to be clear that that's the suggestion, are we gonna retain the ivy? Is that okay with you?
How high is this stone suggestion?
It's gonna meet the foundation line.
The, the original foundation line, whatever that is that protrudes above the street level.
So it's like.
And then what's the rest?
They'll pick that up, line up, and continue to the back.
So it would just go about this high.
I'm still unclear about where the ivy, that's not architectural. Ivy dies.
This is not.
Ivy.
I'm going to have, whatever's on the planting plan, you know, has to be maintained, and you're very aware of that.
So now ivy is growing up on the. Point of the ivy.
This is.
We get to that.
Say eight inches a step, right? So this is about three, three feet, three, four feet. So this is the foundation line.
There's a picture of it.
This is the top of the steps, it's a little below the foundation line. So they're saying extending this out like this.
It does camouflage, as we talked about.
I'd like, I'm sorry, by higher.
All right, so this thing here would be stone.
Around three, four feet.
Like maybe up to this window.
Right.
Get pressure-treated shingles.
Well, that would be an improvement. I, yeah, all right. I still don't like it, but.
So the stone will be.
And then the rest of it will be, what will be under the?
And as we said, we would like to keep the ivy on the house, but it we would be able to do that because with wood shingles, as you said, unless they're pressure-treated, there's no way to keep that to have ivy climb up that without destroying the house.
I mean, we can certainly do that. I think that just to move the line between two materials of your feet will really be fit enough to this purpose that makes this very interesting, but we will do it. We. But then we cannot have the ivy this way. We will do it. Three, three, six, forty-five.
Right, so we'll, we'll amend the application to say that, right? And.
Will the amendment give an actual measurement of the height?
I think you said three foot six inches.
You could just say match, match with the.
Yeah, we'll do the same line.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Uh, no. Yeah, I can't approve that.
Well, was this, yeah, sure. I make a motion to approve two oh seven Madison Street Certificate of Appropriateness for addition.
Do we have a second?
With whatever, with the.
With the modification, with the foundation, yeah, right. That's part of his motion.
However, we're gonna say match the height of the foundation of the original house.
Correct. Okay, is there a second?
Is there a second?
No.
Well, I'll second it just so we can vote.
Okay, all in favor of the motion as stated and clarified, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Yes, me.
Okay, so we, we, we don't have.
How about your thoughts, sir?
I'll go abstaining on this.
Okay.
Why are we abstaining?
I think it's too tall.
Well, we have different reasons. My, my.
Well, you were a nay, so that, you know.
You know, if you have a no, which is fine.
Right.
Why are we abstaining? Is there a conflict or just all?
Don't want to vote yes, don't want to vote no.
That's not, that's a big decision. If you don't have a conflict, you have to, if you want to table it, you think about it a bit more.
We could do that if, if there's something that the board would like, or it.
Yeah.
I mean, and one board member is just totally opposed to.
Do you want to come back with the, with the, you know, showing us the new design?
We can do that, but I don't know if there's anything that would sway any of the other board members other than.
And if there is.
Not happening at all.
If there is, let them know so they can not.
So, so one of the things, one of the things that's an open issue, if you do want the ivy to go up higher than four feet, are you gonna have a material that can hold the ivy and not require all sorts of unusual maintenance? Okay, I just suggested one. Which one was it?
Pressure-treated shingles, okay. And you agree to that?
Okay, and there are some other alternatives?
Right, so we'll.
I know there are other alternatives.
Maybe also from the front, not have the ivy on that wall on that side, have, you know, maybe have a plant. You know, coming, you see what I'm saying? You look through the porch, you see the eye.
Yeah.
Correct? Maybe there, maybe there could be a different planting that's not climbing on your wall, but that's still blocked.
Or they could, or what you're saying basically is they could have a similar material to the house front or compatible material. Excuse me?
We have the two, yes, the two abstentions, the two and Stephen. I think it's best, you have to make a decision. If you don't have a conflict, you have to vote yes or no.
Well, okay, so, so we're just discussing options here.
Yeah.
So, so can we discuss the options?
Yes, but let's, let's make sure we're addressing concerns that may sway your vote. I just don't, I want to have a chat.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Best to talk about what we want to.
That's what I'm trying to do.
We'll make a list, and then we'll table it, and then we'll have this done in two weeks.
Okay, so one suggestion would be the side of the extension that's facing the street could be different material than the return towards the back of the yard. You could have, if you want to have your stone returning towards the back of the yard, no one's gonna see that. Right?
So are you talking about, you don't want the stone on the front, but it's okay on the side and back, or on the back?
If you can cover with ivy, it doesn't make any difference. But you, you, but I mean, that's gonna be, that's gonna be virtually invisible from the street. That's my opinion.
I think it's still better to see in the, the side that we are, we have to focus on, which is this one. Make a solution there that is, that works, and then bring that detail around. We don't have any issue with a good detail all around the house. And I think it's better than changing the, the sides.
I don't know, did you just agree with my suggestion on that?
Eh, I don't, I disagree, but maybe if I understand better, I agree.
Yeah, I think there's a, I think we have a communication thing, so I'm not understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so you see, we can see the ivy on the right-hand side of the house. If that instead had some sort of material that was similar to the original house. Right, and then after the corner, and I don't really, I don't have, have the survey open, but whatever that direction is between the corner and the, and the, and the landscaping. If that was stone, which direction is this?
This is the corner you're talking about, right?
Right, so, so this is the side I'm talking about. It, it, that's, if that is stone, who gives a damn?
Okay. Okay.
So, so which, which, which is, where's north here?
I don't know.
So this is north, this is, so, what is this? This is, this is west.
This is north.
This is east, west.
Oh, no, west, east.
This is south.
Yes.
So, so on the south, on the south wall of the extension.
Okay. I think that'll be possible.
Okay.
And that way we can still have the ivy growing, that's just that side, you know, for security.
Absolutely.
Somebody all writing this down?
I'm, I got it.
So you'll, you'll bring your show us at the next meeting? Okay. Does anyone else agree with me on that?
It sounds, uh.
Does that work for you?
I would, yeah, I would like to see a rendering of, of that idea of what it's gonna look like. That's what I mean. That's what I mean. Okay.
It can be ivy, it can be honeysuckle, it can be climbing rose, we don't care.
As far as.
Mysterio.
I think we're pretty clear. I think we're pretty clear.
Fine, but if there's anything else that we're talking about.
No, I think, well, we, we're not gonna agree on the flat roofs. But we're waving that, I think, because it's not visible. And, and so I think that that is the major point of contention.
I just want to be ready for this. They've been, I think they've been fair, and you guys have been fair.
Okay.
So I just don't like, if you're gonna go, no, you go no, but.
But just, just, I appreciate the fact that when you opened your statements today, you said you heard her comments and you think that the resolution was an improvement over your original design. So we're not being hostile or critical in any way, other than we're all trying to find the an amicable solution. Okay.
Well, it seems, seems like we're approaching something.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to.
Table. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. That motion's proved. Thank you, Beth. So, um. We wouldn't mind you, nice. So, okay, so we're gonna move on to the kitten, item number four, the consent agenda items, which is blank. So then we're gonna move on to number five, which is old business. The people who are representing eleven Grand Street, are you present?
Alex.
You're online?
Oh, good evening. Alex Kriegsman, two seven nine. Hello, Mr. Williams. Alex Kriegsman, two seven nine Main Street, on behalf of the applicant, Ricardo Romo LaRoe, the architect, is on the Zoom as well.
Okay, do you want to remind us of, of the?
Sure. So I'll just give you an overview, and then I will, I'll turn it over to Ricardo. This is an application for a modification of a certificate of appropriateness. This board has already issued a certificate of appropriateness for a substantial renovation of this property, and the applicant, we're, we're looking to do something different and something that we think keeps more of the historic house and is more consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ricardo, who is gonna go through the slides and, and go through the details.
Hello, eh, I am Ricardo. Um, I'm gonna share the screen, and I will start guiding through the design process. So. Eh, excuse me? So this is the, the proposed rendering of the street view. So the, we are, with the exception of some dormers that we would like to add on the second floor of the existing house, we are keeping the depth and the width of your original house the same. And what we are proposing to do is do, which I will show later in the site plan. A L-shaped expansion that will be far away from the street. Separated by a bridge. Then.
He told me no. I'm sorry, go ahead. We're, we're just, we just want to get a bearing. Please proceed, okay?
Let me just try to figure out how to move this, eh, change the screen. Let me just. This is another view of the front of the house. The other one was at an angle, this is straight from the front. So you see the, the main, this is existing, the extension to the right is existing. This small extension on the left is also existing. So the proposed expansion is on the back, eh, in the shape of a nail, and it's, 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 it's far on the back. So the idea is that whatever we're doing while. It's set back enough eh, to be hidden in the perspective angle. Also, just, it's just eh, good to note that the house, the, the lot is raised probably around five, four to five feet from the street. So the house, the existing house sits eh, far above the, the existing street level, and then the lot slopes to the back, so the expansion will go down with slope of the house.
So we're not saying that, if you, if you're sharing it, the audience is not saying it.
Okay, so that's the other angle. Then I will share the the set of plans. Okay. So this is a proposed site plan. It, it, I have, as Alex said, we have a, there is already appro, an approved ARB plan to expand this house. That basically what, that this approved design is expanding the existing house in length and in width. What we are proposing to do, while it is slightly bigger than the already approved, what we're trying to do is do the expansion almost seem like as a separate volume. So we're almost leaving the original volume of the house intact. And then just, which is the area shaded in the dark gray, that's existing house. And then the area shaded with the lines is the, the whole expansion. The, there is an existing garage that will remain as is. We are proposing to redo the driveway in gravel with a curb, cobblestone curb. Right now it's asphalt. And there will be a slope with grass going from the street up to the level of the entrance, which is level thirty-three. Then we have the existing house right now sits at elevations thirty-six and the proposed expansion will be two feet lower at a level thirty-four. The ridge line will remain the same, so we're not going above. I will move on to a landscape plan. The house right now has a private all around the property. We're keeping the existing trees. What we would do is we will focus our landscape efforts mostly on the front yard, where we will have a low eighteen inch high boxwood hedge. Kind of framing a court and then private hedges, some crepe mirrals along the side of the garage. Basically, the perimeter of the house is surrounded by boxwoods and some hydrangeas. Idea is to, by putting also the crepe mirrals between the garage and the house. We are proposing to basically try to screen the expansion from the street. So just existing plants of their existing house. And this is a proposed layouts. So just to give you some numbers. And the proposed house is twenty-five hundred square feet. The already approved ARB plan, I believe, is eighteen hundred square feet. So again, we are making our expansion bigger than the previously approved, but we are just.
Seven hundred thousand.
Our strategy is to just do it as a separate, seem as a separate volume that is set far behind the existing house. And the connecting link between the existing house and the new extension is a, it's a thin, very narrow connector. That is set back from the street, so you don't really see it. The second floor plan. And I will move to probably elevations, which is what's probably will concern you the most. So I have a comparable at the bottom, you see the existing house as if.
Excuse me, you on two oh one?
I am in two hundred.
I'd really like to see a comparison between what we approved and what you are proposing.
Yep.
Like a before and after.
Well, he's got a thirty-three percent expansion, right?
You're, you're increasing the size of this house.
They started at eighteen hundred.
So it's.
Here comes what was approved.
Okay.
I have the elevation plan, but I don't have them as a side by side comparison, but I can show them.
We'll get it.
Well, I don't see side by side.
So.
Let's look at that.
I want to see the outside. I don't care what the inside is. So it looks like you did approve of them.
I think we, let's see. Existing structure. This is the existing.
Right now it's like this. Yeah.
What was approved in the one story?
Yeah.
You got it?
They're proposing this too. Let's just set back further.
Yeah, but this. Yeah. Some kind of a little. This is what you approved.
Right.
This is what they're proposing now. Oh, yeah, none of this.
Right.
I think if you look at the profile, I think they were proposing a one-story off the back, this.
Right.
Not a two-story that's elevated. So it's really a very different.
I think what we approved was pretty good.
Are you aware that you have four neighbors upset about this project you're working on?
I, I can respond to that. We read the comments, but the, some of those comments, at least one of them. Seemed to not want construction at all in Sag Harbor and was addressing things going on at the school. And as far as the other comments, they, you know, what, I would submit that what is in front of the board. Is a proposal to modify what you've already approved to something different. And so, and that's where I think the board seems to be, I'm not in the room, but it seems to be what you're looking at now. And that is the appropriate consideration rather than what is being proposed versus what's there now. Or whether there should be allowed a renovation at all and someone had, you know, doesn't like the, the owner, that, you know. So there was a lot of irrelevant things that were raised. Everybody has a right to their opinion and, you know, they can express it tonight. But to the extent that you, you've asked for a response, that, that's what I would submit to you.
Have you been signed on since the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
That has.
You have?
He was, he was there, yeah.
Right, so you saw the discussion we just had about protruding and sightlines and all this other stuff?
Yes, I did.
And so without, without, you know, favor or anything. This is very different than what we approved previously. And the whole thing about jetting out from the sides. And, and, and in this case, it's just going from a one-story to a two-story. This is a significantly different request and, and, and is not in keeping what we just asked the other applicant to do.
Sure, and I, I appreciate that, but I think if you look.
And, and nor what they did do in response to our request. Because they were, they came back to us and they had made some significant adjustments. So I, I just want that for the record, that we understand that we're trying to maintain a standard of consistency here. This is very different was, that was approved. This is, I think, a significant change.
It, it is, and, and I heard the discussion on the, on the first application, but what I would submit to you is. That, you know, one of the things that this board, one of its duties and one of the things it's always talked about is, is preserving. The, the original house and the, what you've already approved has a lot of changes to the house itself. Whereas this is an addition in the back that is, is set pretty far back, especially when you look at the connecting piece. And so it respects more of the original house. And I would also submit to you historically, if you look at how additions were done. I, I think Mr. Student Roth could speak to this in, both in Sag Harbor and throughout the East End. It was more traditional to add on an addition as opposed to expand what was there in, in different directions. So I would submit that what, what is being submitted now. Not only preserves more of the original house, but is more consistent with the way that renovations were traditionally done to these kinds of houses.
I have to disagree with you. I think that this new proposal, the original house is completely lost. And the new addition of the, of the roof kind of coming above the line of the original structure. It makes it look very large and this is not a village for large, large homes.
With the two dormers.
Well, I think that the house is about forty percent bigger than what we approved. And while we can't really comment on. The size of the house, because I think that's more of a zoning issue, it's the massing that we are looking at. And. Quite a bit bigger from all perspectives.
So how did the program change so drastically?
Is it a new owner?
It's a new owner, new architect.
And the, the, the existing house is, as is, is too small for a young family to, to live in the house. The owner wants to just make it just a different, it's a new owner and they want a new design. So that's.
Okay, but, but we are, we are, we are restricted by our understanding of what the federal guidelines are. Since you're, it's a historic house and you're in a historic district, right? And why, why I referred to the earlier conversation is because it was similar sort of situation. Historic house, a historic district. And what we discussed and seem to indicate we're comfortable with.
Let's stay focused on this one. I understand that we're talking about the president.
Well, I mean, but, but this is, this is drastically different.
So let's stay on that.
Okay, so this is drastically different. This is. It's not, it's not an opinion. It's a fact that this is drastically different than what, what we have traditionally. Considered. So what would you suggest? Because, you know, obviously we would like to see the house smaller, so why don't we be constructive and kind of tell him what he can do to, you know, get this.
One thing I would suggest that the new proposal, the roof line of the extension, which is recessed to the back. Is at the same height as the existing house. And the, and the length of that extension is such that it, it appears to double the size of the house and it's at the same height. So it isn't addressing one of the core issues. In the portal, which is to preserve the original building as the dominant part of the structure. So I think by, by going from a one-story approved project to a two-story. And that second story seems at the height of the existing roof line. And it's fully visible because you look in, in the front elevation, you see. To, to the left of the existing house. It's quite large. Not only that, the penetration is very different from the whole house. There's a great contrast and it's, it's, it's large in proportion to the existing building. I guess now that we're seeing in plan, it's actually recessed pretty far back. I mean, it's about ten plus twenty-one, thirty, it's some thirty feet back. From the front wall of the existing house, but in elevation it looks. It may, it may not present well in elevation. Because in fact, that extension is recessed quite, quite a ways back behind the existing house. But as an elevation, it just appears to be an extension to the side of it. The windows are very different and it's at the same height. So I think that those are design issues that are problematic.
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask about this garage and this driveway. Stone wall that's going along the side of the driveway, which is somehow. At this picture that I'm looking at here, makes it look like a garage that happens to have a house attached to it. It's not, not a Sag Harbor.
That is basically just an existing. I'm trying to open there.
Okay, so this is the proposed house. This is the additions.
And merges with the garage. It's just a visual.
But using what we just discussed earlier.
Okay.
They could do something. This doesn't have to protrude this far. This could be done within the sightline. So is there any opportu- opportunity? To change the shape of the extension? So that it. Is closer to that within terms of the sideline parameters of the. And, and more obstructed by the existing house. In other words, you have, I don't know what shape to call this, but, but you, you have. Part of your extension going perpendicular to the, or, or parallel to the pool. If that could be narrowed, where, where protrudes out, you know, past the walkway. To behind the garage. Could that be narrower and you pick up the mass going backwards?
Perhaps, obviously that's a question more for Ricardo than me and it sounds like we're going to have to, you know, go back and reconvene. But I think all, all these, all this feedback that we can receive now is helpful. So I, I've heard about the roof line and elevation and the garage and the shape of the extension. So, you know, that's a question for Ricardo, but, but we appreciate this and if there are other, there are other comments, we'd appreciate those as well.
I would suggest revisiting this wall that leads to the garage. It looks.
Talking about the wall, I submitted some side pictures and I'm showing them on Zoom right now. There is an existing wall and the reason why we need a retaining wall is just because there is a change into, a considerable change.
I, I can see the need for a wall. I'm questioning the material of the one that you have designed.
Where is the mature?
Oh, it seems to be giant rocks.
It's a boulder wall.
It's, but it's a facade. It's, looks like a false, a false stone.
Uh, what's it called? Techno block? Is that what it is or is it a boulder wall?
It's not a boulder wall. It's stone clad. It's.
Yeah, and. Those, those stones just don't look like they ever lived on the eastern end of Long Island.
It's a stone veneer.
Yes, I know. A stone veneer of some kind of stones that don't exist here.
Well, it, it is a rendering after all, so we would, you know, like be, I could submit. The samples of the stone so that you can see or maybe a picture of, of, of a built example. I, I mean, I also have no, no problem changing the, the, the material to, to something of your liking, you know, I mean, it's our. It's, it's my intention to, to make something that would be beautiful for the village. So I, by no means I mean to, to, to push the limits. But so I would submit samples and I am open to changing, well, I will have to, to ask the client if they were okay. But we could reconsider just changing the, the material to, to, to maybe just. I wouldn't do stucco, but perhaps brick or, or, or something that is more aligned with the character of the village. Or maybe have some colonial looking stone wall. Consistent to basements that you see. With regards to the, to the extension, I guess we will have to reconvene with the team and, and, and see how we can. Change it, but one of the. I want to share again the screen. My intention when doing the.
Make it not as nice.
It was, so basically when you're looking in a flat, the cut row in the, the elevation may change massively because we're looking at without depth or the, the sidelines. But this is kind of how we would look at the extension. You agree that if you are all in agreement that it's, it's, you wanna change it, then we, we would see how we can find a common ground to, 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 that can please you. So we're open to it, but I just wanted you to see this image that I'm showing on Zoom of the elevation. Look, looking at it from the driveway corner, basically.
It's pretty nice.
Any, any
We need to bring, bring down the mass of that extension.
Profit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lower the effect.
Do you think the owner would be interested in having it be the color of the original house?
Maybe. I, I think all, all the feedback we can get is helpful.
Was that seaford?
I don't know what it is. It's some old Sag Harbor color.
Oh, I think it was something
It's weathered, it's weathered nicely.
Okay, so you understand what we're saying about the sidelines from the street, right? Is that clear? Okay, in terms of the extension and how it might be reshaped in such a way that it minimizes and, and also in terms of the mass. Maybe it's a different pitch roof, something that's not as high and the massing's different.
I have one more question, which is I'm assuming that you are preserving the original windows of the house and the frames.
Yes, the, the intention is to preserve the, 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 the windows are historic in the original house.
Okay, that's, that's that's not an option. But Megan, do you have, you've been, you've been on target all day. Do you have any more comments?
Definitely it's downsized. It's far too large for the village. It's a historic district. Whatever the expansion is going to be, I want the existing dwelling to be the focal point of this house. And nothing should be daunting over it.
Judith?
Oh, I have another question. I see the original house had a fence.
Yeah, it has a big fence, yes.
Yeah, are you planning to replicate that?
Uh, we can, I mean, I, I, I don't think the, the, the client, my client will have any objections to that. Yeah, so we can replicate it.
I also note the front walk appears to be, I, I can't see it very well, but it appears to be rather massive in some way. The, the original looked like a series of stones leading to the door, but this looks like something huge. I can't really make it out.
Okay.
Oh, here we go. Lots of blocks, heavy blocks. I can't tell what they are.
Granite blocks.
Yeah. That seem to overwhelm the house a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pixelated. Looks like granite.
Yeah, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah.
It's the granite steps.
Maybe I would, if you, if they're still there, I would suggest keeping what, what's already there.
What's already there, it's, it's just cement.
Okay, never mind.
You can see on, on this picture, it's just
Okay.
So I would say that what's, but there is, I, I mean, it's certainly old because it's crumbling, but I wouldn't say
We don't want you to keep cement. We don't want you to keep the cement.
Right. Although, although it might be historic cement, you know.
All right, let's get, let's get this moving. Do you have any comments? Judith, I mean, Bethany, you have any?
No, I, I
Am I allowed to say, just, I don't know if I'm allowed to say it, but I would just say, consider your neighbors. You know, if you're gonna build this house, the neighbors will still be there and I think their thoughts are valid, you know.
I think her point's well taken that, that being as courteous and considerate of your neighbors is a very important thing to do. And, and we hope that you will impress your G C to the extent that he be considerate. Our streets are narrow, access is hard. I don't think that's asking too much. So we're gonna come back, my understanding is that we're gonna come back with some modifications and suggestions. So we should, we'll table this for further discussion. Okay, can I get a motion to table this for further discussion?
I'll make that motion.
Take a second. I'll second it. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. So we're tabled. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I said next week, next meeting is what I meant to say.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to fifty-five Howard. Is there somebody here to represent fifty-five Howard Street? All right, we will hold this off and table it at least until the end of the agenda.
You can, you can say what, because he's not thinking about it today. He's still on the air, we, I mean, Z B A.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take a motion to table this.
A motion to table it. I move to table it.
All right, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, twenty-five Bluff Road. I think I remember this one. L L C. Are people here to? Okay. Seven minutes? Yeah, we're gonna try to do this one quickly. We spent a lot of time with you last time. Yes. We're only doing it once a month. So actually, we should ask each other what we wanna do, if we wanna do twice a month or one longer, maybe. This is the one with no front window. Oh, she's, they've added front window. They've changed the look of the facade.
I'm Christine. Hi, I was here last time with my design partner, Gabriel. She's not here with me tonight, but we are presenting, it sounds like you remember. What's that?
Quite striking. It was memorable.
There were two things last time. One was we were, we were told that you need to go in front of the zebra to get an interpretation on the heights. Because we have a pitch roof, we also have a roof garden, which is, we needed a platform. So it was unclear whether we can mix both. And submitting further documentation to, to Chris and we submitted a, an application for Z B A, but we were told that the building inspector agrees with our interpretation, so that, that, that maybe it was not necessary. We are back on your agenda. And the, the one comment we got the last time was to indicate some plantings by the adjacent to the pool area on the south side of the property, since we're closer to the neighborhood here. So we've addressed that on the site now.
Very good.
And we did make some changes to the front facade in the meantime. You know, your, your note was taken. Also, the, the homeowners had some thoughts and it just, it needed a little further development. So we have a rough, this is really a render, just sort of a, just a rough image of where we're at with the elevation. And we wanted to give you guys a, like a three-dimensional view to see what, what it would look like from the street. So this one window, if you remember, we wanted to keep the arch because we have the barrel arch inside that room. So we're still reflecting it here. We're doing it in glass block, which is also matching the glass block on the top of the garage. We eliminated the incline, so all of that additional structure, we would need to support that. That's no longer necessary. Below it, we've added a patterned brick. And that is in line with the, the doors, the sliding doors below.
But those sliding doors are always there? I don't remember them being
They were, they were, they weren't aligned with the arch. There were three of them before. So we made that a little bit wider. And then we did a window on the front here. See there, also on the render. And we, what we did was we actually stepped back the, the first floor. So to create sort of a, a little bit more depth in the facade and we brought the brise soleil down in the front here too. So we have, we have four sections where we're using a brise soleil brick. Or five, if you wanna count the whole fence here, but these are the four sections. So the idea is that the house is sort of perforated. So at night, during the day, it has more of a uniform look. And at night, you know, these areas where, with the perforated brick, which, and the glass block were kind of low as the lights come on at night. So some of the changes, I don't know if you want to
Basically, you've addressed what we had asked you to address, right?
Correct.
Already?
Yeah, so that would be these
Made those corrections.
Yeah.
The planting by the pool.
So what we're doing is we have a, we have a mature oak tree. We'd like to keep the ones on the north side of the property. We'll keep as many as is possible with construction. There are two here, so we'll be keeping one of those. And then on the side of it, we'll be doing sort of a layer of planting of junipers. Maybe some rose of Sharon, the rainbills in front of that and in front of that. Just sort of like a layer look over that southern finish. And the neighboring property also has some screening here. They have a row of leaven pines, which are about So they do well screening from about, probably about six feet up to about twenty feet up. But it's really that lower area that we're, we're looking to screen with, with these sort of sculpted junipers.
Did last time, didn't you give us a perspective from a like a Google Earth perspective? Of what separates the scrub and the brush between you and your neighbors?
Yeah, there was actually. I think it might be this one?
Yes, I think that's the one. Cause, cause my concern is contractors like to build one way and that's to tear down every tree on a piece of property.
Yeah.
So you're going to restore or replace if, particularly things that separate your property from your neighbor's property? If, if they, you know, if they clear cut, so.
If we use that, oh. Yeah, we would, we would, if we lost that
Not just the one that you love, but I'm saying you, you have, you have trees that go along other people's property too, that shared, shared boundaries.
Right.
So if your contractor takes those down for his convenience, are you gonna restore them in some way?
We would. Yeah, we would. I mean, it's important to us that, and we've had these surveyed. So these are, we know exactly where these are. And, you know, on the northern side of the property, the, the line between the two properties is, is more blurred, right? There's no fence there. There are a bunch of mature trees. We'd like to keep those. We have, we're thirty, almost thirty feet off the property line there. This side of the house, most of this is gonna go of what's naturally here, which you can see all on this side. This property to the south has a, like a six-foot deer fence, something. So, and then on their side, they have the leaven pines. So they're, the only trees that I think could stay would be one of these oak trees that's really close to the property line. This, everything that's up here, which you can kind of see here, would have to go because of the
Just show us that again, please. On the bottom one, yeah.
Yeah.
Pardon me.
Right now, it's a vacant lot, correct? We're not correct. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, my only comment is this is a very unusual design for Sag Harbor. It is not in a historic district, so that's your right. But I think that for your clients, it's, it's not a transition. For your neighbors, it is a transition. And, and, and to the extent that they're used to having ultimate privacy now, that you should maybe wanna respect them.
Just keep that in mind.
So, so are we, we're, this is a old business, right? This is new business?
Oh, sorry.
So I'd like to, the board to review the, the design and the thoughts, but I would like to suggest that if we move to approve this, we do this subject, we approve it so you can start your construction. But we, before you, we'd like to see a landscape plan. Okay, and so, so it's not a, it's a partial approval of your application.
Yeah, understood. So the landscape plan, and I understand the concerns.
Okay, but something more detailed than what you showed us.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I share those concerns. Absolutely. I mean, we, we would like to reserve as many trees as we can on the property. I think it would be helpful, we were thinking of what, what's point to get into a landscape plan. And I think it would be helpful to get to the point where we're marking out our excavation and speaking with the excavation contractors to understand what trees are gonna have to be now.
Basically, any trees ten feet from the footprint, that's the overcut.
Right, right. Which is how we've decided which trees we could keep based on what we surveyed.
And I would just like to suggest that when you consider your plan, consider native trees as opposed to lots of green giants.
Yeah.
Yeah, our, our, our animal population suffering. So we'd like to see some native trees, maybe even some flowering perennials, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's no green giants here.
Okay.
Yay.
All right. So would anyone like to move that we give them limited approval on the construction? Or do you have more comments on the design and the look? Anybody have any more comments? Then I'll move that we
Yeah, what are you going to, approving the house but not the
Approval for, for the construction of the house, but not the landscape. And so, so you have
Hold on, hold on.
So we, we originally had this as a public hearing.
It's a public hearing, so originally, and she had noticed and you, we opened the public hearing. And so now we have to see if there's anybody in the public.
Sorry, thank you.
Oh.
I, I'm sorry. I, I thought that the public hearing was closed at the end of, at the last It would have been closed, because without a decision, what they did is they tabled it for you to go to Z B A. So now
That's right.
See if there's anybody in the public and then if there's anybody in the public, you keep that and then you can go forward.
So I guess we're open for public comment. Is there anybody in public who'd like to comment about twenty-five Bluff Point Road? Any observations? Is that the entire viewing audience there?
Yes.
Does he hear you?
Maybe he's just hanging out. Well, we're not, we're not telling TV Well, we're not, we're not telling TV tonight.
Mr. Connors? Can you hear us? Mr. Connors? Steven?
There's a mute symbol.
Yeah, now he muted.
I think he just muted himself.
Oh, there was unmuted.
Now it's unmuted, but he's not talking. Do you want to say hello to us, sir?
Hello?
There's no way he can't hear us unless.
So it might be volume on his computer or something.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't have any sound.
Oh.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Reading lips?
He can't hear us.
Do you have something to say?
This is.
It's okay, let's move on. We write him a big note?
Yeah, I don't think he was.
Well, I think his name is Connors.
There's Ron Davis.
His name is not Byers, it's Connors.
Yes.
Yes, we've been saying Connors, whoever.
Oh, I was, thought it was, but he's not, he's now on the line.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Mr., can you hear us, Mr. Connors?
No.
Does he want to?
He does. But he was saying, I called him earlier, and he was saying he was having trouble.
What is, what is his, what is his interest? Can you tell us, is he interested in this particular one at twenty-five Bluff?
No, but he's not. He's, he's with me. He's with me.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Do, do you want to comment, do you want to comment on this?
No, I don't.
Okay, fair enough.
Unless I get a chance to build it. If I build it.
To close? I, I, I move that we close the public hearing.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now you can go ahead.
So now are there any other comments about twenty-five Bluff Road? Modifications, observations? Or suggestions?
I think it's a strange design for Sag Harbor, but I think because it's near the water, it's acceptable, and I, I think it's kind of pretty.
It'll be very interesting to see it at night.
Yeah, we'll all drive by.
You're right.
So anyway, so I'll accept the motion to approve twenty-five Bluff Road conditionally on the, on the submission of a landscaping plan within the next three meetings.
You don't want them to just come back and do the whole, you know?
Well, what's your schedule? Are you on the schedule to move ahead?
Yes.
So why don't we just approve them for construction?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was trying to do. That's my motion. Can I get a second to that?
Second.
Any questions, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. So can you come back to us in the next three?
Yes.
Thank you. This is the first thing I'm saying.
It's only an hour and thirty-six minutes in.
Okay, guys, we'll go back to twice a month.
We don't have anything new for the next meeting, so we have enough.
Please let me threaten people. Was this one twenty-seven?
No.
It says twenty-eight, twenty-six, thank you.
Just right on there is land. Bethany, can you just put on there what your.
Oh, yeah. Make that, make that motion group approved for construction.
Right, right here again?
Yeah. Yes.
Right about where you sign. So I'm gonna say, come here.
While we're getting done, maybe, who's ever, anyone here representing twenty-one Lincoln Avenue?
I would say site.
Is anyone representing the Fully Love family? I guess not. So I'll take a motion that we table this till the end of the meeting.
Make that motion.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
The three of us. Okay, the next one is nineteen Grant Street. Is anyone here to represent?
They have, they're coming to the next meeting.
So we're gonna table that.
I move we table nineteen Grant.
Second.
What happened to twenty-one Lincoln?
We already did it all. While you guys are all.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're on two oh six Division Street? Anyone here for two oh six Division Street? Going once?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So please tell us your name.
My name is Laura Tuman, four oh two Main Street, Sag Harbor. We are before you on December eighth.
Nineteen Grant.
Okay, please refresh our memory.
Sure, just a replacement of existing windows in a house. We had a site visit at the day after the last meeting. My husband, the contractor and the owner were there, met with Zach on the ninth of December.
Oh, and you wrote a report.
Zach, will you refresh us about the report, please?
Sure. So it's a relatively small house. It had already been interior cutting had been done, so you could see the structure. The window sashes have been removed, but were stacked in the backyard. I guess project came to a halt, as I recall. And it took us a while, I'm working, looking at all this with the fellow, who I believe must be your husband's contractor.
Yes.
And so we looked, and then the owner came later, but we looked at the windows and I wrote this up, but to the best of my recollection, there's a very early window still surviving in the upper story toward the front, and that looked different in time period from the house, because the house has gotten a Victorian era porch on the front, and most of the window sashes were of a later period. So what we surmised was that that one earlier window, which is, I think, a nine over six or six over nine, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Was actually an interesting evidence of the fact that the house itself is much earlier than it appears. And then we looked at the structural framing and came into a whole understanding of it. So my recommendation was simply to keep that one pair of window sashes, which is still where it is. And the rest that was stacked up in the back was not a consistent bunch of windows and.
Oh, that's right.
Right.
放进into the house or anything. So it's really that that one that's still there that should be retained. Now, as far as what goes back in now, I think the project has choices. They can either replicate that type or the later type, which would relate to the how the house was enlarged, not enlarged, but renovated with the porch. I think that's a two over two configuration.
Are these their most single thing?
They would be new windows, you know? So, so we have a strange situation there, but I think that one pair of sashes is very important as an indication of the arms into the house, and the other windows were replaced at a later time anyway. So we don't need to worry about saving that. Okay. That's, I think that's.
So what kind of windows do you anticipate?
What was submitted was Anderson four hundred series Goodrights, which were the windows which were approved right across the street at two oh five Division. So we thought about, you know, keeping them consistent with which what is in the neighborhood approved across the street, but keeping the window as discussed, correct? That one six over nine.
Oh, yes. The new ones will be what, two over two configuration?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay.
Great.
Nice consistency now, instead of a mis.
And so you know which window Zach is referring to?
Absolutely. It's there, it's staying there, yep.
Zach, you'll identify that some way for us?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Oh, I will move to approve the two oh six Division Street and because of the site visit report, and that there's one special window, which Zach will identify, and to be maintained, and the rest can be replaced with more current model windows.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're, that's unanimous, right? So now we finally get to new business. Fifty-one, this is good.
Have a good night, everybody.
Okay.
Good night.
Oh, my goodness. So new business, we have.
I'm signed. I'm signed.
Can we get the next batter in the box? Fifty-one Division Street, is everybody representing fifty-one Division?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, okay. Tell by who's in the audience.
My name is Ali Alexander Yan, and I'm representing the twenty-one Division Street. I'm the owner of the new business. I under, first of all, thank you for giving me the chance to opportunity to explain basically the WTF.
Conditions there, Bethany?
This is where Little Birdie used to be.
Yes, yes.
Well, it's next to Little Birdie. Little Birdie's still gonna be.
I think it's Jack Serbrow, actually.
Oh, you're right. Yes, but wait a minute, isn't.
Go ahead and start, ma'am.
Okay, sorry.
This is Little Birdie, Jacks.
So.
Little Birdie, that's what I thought.
Oh, it is.
Complimented by the words, what the falafel.
Yeah, right.
WTF acronym is up to a personal interpretation at this point. We also believe that the WTF acronym is left to the eye of the beholder, and for us, it has other meanings, not just a commonly known taboo slang. For example, while I was at the university back home, for me WTF was my schedule, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That's how I I grew up knowing WTF. Our store would not be.
That, it was just, that was our reaction. That's why we went from a twofer to a full, full group. We felt, we see that it's on the awning, there, there is the name of the shop. This little circle is WTF. As you can see here at the bottom. And that's, it just drew, you know, it drew, that's what we were drawn to, and that was our reaction. And that's why we didn't do it as a two-person.
Well, I, I have another response to that, in addition to that. And my response is this is so distinctive from what we have in the village. Could we have a white field with your green letters, maybe, let me, what's the edged in black?
No.
No?
Are we talking about the logo itself or the awning?
I'm talking about the awning and your, and your sign under the UPS sign, store sign. I just think it's kind of if it could be just a little less jarring. In terms of the logo.
I can give my opinion that I think it's.
Yeah, that sounds like an opinion, though, right?
It's not, I, I mean, he felt, he talked about the signs and Megan and I, and we just felt that given where it is, it's not on Main Street of Sag Harbor. It's in that, you know, tucked away in that little area. And we felt that the colors were okay. We were not worried about that.
Doesn't offend me. No, I think, I think, I think the name is explained, the initials are explained.
Exactly.
I, I, I think it's, it's something that's, you know, it's, it's a marketing kind of thing, and it'll make people stop and, and see what's going on. So, so that, I don't have a problem with that.
And the good part is it's not on the main division, it's just on that.
Right. You, you, you've already been, you've already been attracted by the, the falafel sign. I just don't like the philosopher's colors, that's all. But that's, that's personal. Any other comments, or we can make a motion on this?
I think it's kind of cute.
If it was on Main Street, would it be okay to have a WTF sign? You think?
Right.
Okay.
I, I, I like the fact that it's tucked away, and you have to kind of find it, and then you get to go, oh, hee hee hee.
Same reason.
But you found it. Yeah.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion? Or should I make the motion?
I move that we accept the sign near the UPS store, wherever that's.
Fifty-one Division.
Thank you.
Any second? Second. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. So Bethany was no.
You know, you said no.
So did Zach, by the way, the last thing we approved, did you put in, did you fill in the conditions part?
Yeah, there was, I had a photograph of the house and I circled the window.
Thank you. Okay. We're on Glover Street, right? Fifty-nine Glover Street?
Yep.
Is anybody?
I'm sorry to, to, but I didn't understand, I mean, is it approved?
You got it.
You've been approved, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, good night, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone here to represent fifty-nine Glover Street? Okay, I'll take a motion to table this.
Motion to table fifty-nine Glover Street.
Second, okay, Judith seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's table. Okay, fifty-five Lincoln Street. Is anyone here to represent fifty-five Lincoln Street? Huh? You're not, okay. So is anyone on Zoom who's here to represent fifty-five Lincoln Street? Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to table.
We'll take second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. See, we'd make a time.
Yeah.
Forty-one Glover Street, anyone here for forty-one Glover? Virtual or in person? It must be the weather, okay, I.
You wanna you wanna act on the solar? Which one is it? Oh, forty-one Glover.
Yeah, okay. I'll take a motion to table.
Motion to table forty-one Glover Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Twenty-five Terry Drive, is there anyone here to represent Terry? Hello, I think I know that young man. Can you identify yourself, sir, please?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
The board, my name is Tate Overton, I'm the architect representing the new owner of twenty-five Terry. Happens to be the son of Earl Graves Senior, who unfortunately passed away a couple of years ago, and his son is now, I inherited the house and has been using the house his entire life, of course, and wants to renovate it, so.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it's funny, I brought a easel. I don't use this one.
So you said new owner.
Well.
You came before us before.
Yeah, it's, John Graves is the owner.
Okay.
Just in Terry. We did, we presented as a discussion item about a year ago, and fall of twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, say twenty-one, and then it went on to the ZVA, because we did have the side yard expansion. So that went into the ZVA, and it was approved in July of this past.
So this substantially different than what we saw before?
I don't think it's substantially different, but it is different. We, we found some, some issues with the house, and we've kind of tweaked it a little bit, so I'll walk you through what's, what's different. So Terry Drive, the house is here, it is on the water. So quick recap of the. Just a quick, kind of recap of the property. Terry Drive is here, there is a kind of a steep hill, that's a driveway that leads down to the front entrance of the house. So you sort of look over the house somewhat when you're viewing it from the street. The existing house is this profile, and the hatched areas are in the expansion. That was part of the ZVA presentation. If you guess.
Yeah, you're. So the, the.
Here, um, so just orient, north is this way, uh, water's out here, um, street. So there's a kind of a northwest expansion on the first floor only. Is to create a master bedroom for John. There's no bedroom on the ground level currently, or no, not a bedroom suite. So John would like to have that suite there, so we're making this expansion here. Um, and then also kind of infilling, begin one story in this zone here. There's an existing shed over here that we're kind of building out on. It'll remain a shed, and then we're, there's this sort of this recess and a deck up above, and this area here, we're infilling it. So those are the areas that kind of pushing the house out. It has basically a stucco base, this is the fourth floor. The cedar shake, uh, that'll come back to making the second floor and the roof profile. So it has, the house is sort of set up as, with three different zones, sort of shafts with these sort of steep angled cap profiles coming. This is, this is.
Oh, so.
It was, you know, it was a, it was a part of that. So, uh, I'll walk you through this, not the in-depth description, but basically, uh, when you're looking at the front of the house, it is this view here, and kind of this view from the back, from, this is street, I'm from the, yeah, sort of from the street, a little bit on the side, uh, like the side yard. This zone here is where we're kind of filling it in, so we're filling in the zone. This side, uh, is the, uh, and this is where we're building, uh, a one-story addition towards the back backs, so that's the end of the west addition. And I have a few more, let's show this. These are actually from the ZVA presentation, so I figured it'd be helpful to show you some more pictures after the lesson. Yeah, so, um, again, reorienting, these are ZVA, so it's about the property line, uh, relationships to the neighbor, but we're expanding on this existing shed here. This is the other property line here, and we're spanning back here. Uh, and this is the water views. So you can really see the diagram of the house, it's a slot, then a two-story with a flat roof terrace, which we're tanning. Then there's another kind of slot with a mountainous profile, and then this as well is another one, so it's broken into. Again, for ZVA, I thought it would be helpful to demonstrate, um, this is that same view as before, the east side, and this is a diagram of the expansion volumetrically, so it's just a dumb box, but that's showing what the volume would be for ZVA. Same with this view, you're basically seeing the bed, bed from the street, especially because you're high up, you don't really see the expansion. Here is, except for the street. One of the comments for ZVA was to remove the non-compliant six-foot fence in the front, which we will remove this fence. Once you're past that fence, and you're looking through that side yard, you see this bump out here, that's the addition. So it's just like a three-foot projection onto that side yard. Again, all this is approved, but I realized, you know, it's volumetrics and design, I wanted to present it for you guys. So, front of the house, uh, everything remains, the area that's added on is basically a slot here, and this piece right here, to create this master bedroom suite on this one level. Um, and then this is shed over here, and this used to have like a profile to it, and we're just infilling it to be able to make this kitchen. To highlight this to you by creating a one-story on the front, we have a shed roof. On the back, we're putting a deck. So this is a deck that's off of this bedroom, existing bedroom, but this is essentially the, the roof of the addition below. We're keeping it as a deck to stay within skyplant as well, so there's a railing here, but it's, uh, the volume is not reaching to skyplant.
So it's a second floor deck?
It is.
Okay, and, um, but there's privacy.
There is. Um, the neighbor is property that you probably know, it was built maybe, uh, eight years ago, uh, and it's pretty, they, they had a lot of variances for that property, including living very close to the property line. They had to, because of that, put in, uh, rows of trees. John's house, uh, the property has a series of very mature, uh, beautiful plane trees that we're, we're keeping. We don't have a row of, uh, you know, like, I guess evergreens or things like that. We could throw some in if it would help, but there's no real view between these two spaces, so we thought it's okay. Naturally, you want this view for the view, that's why we're going for it. Uh, the layout of the house, everything should, it shuffled around. We, uh, we're essentially renovating the interior because it's, it's very compartmentalized, so we're trying to create reasonable bedrooms for their children, and, uh, and keeping existing conditions more or less. Uh, we are redistributing zones, there is this attic space, it was occupied before, it would have a, a stair that ran up to it, and, uh, to use as a bedroom, um, we now are making that mechanical and attic spaces no longer used, um, which it really shouldn't be, and that's comedy, ZVA would also just, in general, just it makes sense to make that up. More mechanical space on the interior and the roof plan, so, uh, again, we're keeping the profile of the roof, you can't really tell here, I'll show you in a rendering. This is sort of like, it looks like a mountain range, uh, and then this is a flat roof that we're maintaining, and then this is the existing roof. We are modifying the front entry, so we're extending this roof down to create an awning as it comes into the front entry. So that's, uh, plants, material, uh, coming back to that cedar shake, is the roof and the siding is falling hard, is completely needing replacement. So we're replacing it in kind with new shake, this idea. The piece is, um, the first floor, again, we like the idea that this house sort of looks like, um, has sort of some monolithic white stucco base to it, and the stucco is, or the cedar shake is floating up above, so we kind of kept that as the roof. We thought we'd lighten up the railing, which is kind of a heavy, thick, kind of dense railing with a more light kind of profile. Obviously, meets code, but we just wanted to make it more lightweight. There is some new decking going in. The, I should go back to lot coverage and building coverage, we're actually dropping the amount of lot coverage, total lot coverage. The first floor building coverage increased a little bit, but it's still well below, uh, the twenty percent required. And we're dropping the amount of, uh, kind of paving and et cetera on the property, so it's below this, this thing.
But the square footage.
Square footage is, well, yeah, it meets, is below twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
And, and twenty-five, and twenty percent respectively. And, uh, we're changing the windows, they're rotting out, so we're getting new Anderson, I received these windows, uh, insiders. So we're doing sliders, um, on the, you know, off the terrace on the water side.
Just out of curiosity, the slide is, or suspended from the top, or are they gonna be unrollers?
They're not lift slide, they're, um, we're just proposing standard sliders, like a Henderson Glide, narrow line glide, when sliding ones. I, I love the lift slide ones, but the lead time on that, it's just, not to mention cost, but they're gorgeous. Okay, so, uh, again, just kind of plain wise, this is an existing non-compliant condition that, oh yeah, kind of an issue for ZVA, and the addition is just this little piece here that we're just within intentionally, of course. And, um, so this is the front facade, obviously it looks very flat, but you can see this kind of zones we've been talking about. This is the, uh, the west facade, so this portion here, including his railing zone, is that addition that's popping out. The terrace is up here, that second floor terrace. And then this portion here is that bump out on the front of the house. So essentially, we're just maintaining the profile aesthetic approach to this house as much as we could. We didn't design this, I wish I, all these things, no one would ever come up with this house today.
So that was built on top of another house.
That's true, actually, right.
Built on a cinder block house.
This house is made to withstand, uh, you know, all kinds of Italian attacks. Mr. Graves was thinking, but it's all concrete.
No, well, no, he didn't build it. He, he, he bought it. The, the first one was, uh, an immigrant from Jamaica who was used to hurricanes, so he built a hurricane-proof house.
Oh.
That's true.
Yeah.
So the whole first floor platform, this slab ungraded, and then there's a cellar area where mechanical stuff is. And then the, the first or the second floor floor is all pre-stressed concrete, uh, like, uh, planks.
Doctor, Doctor Dismen.
It's, man, ahead of his time.
Way ahead of his time.
Wow.
He should have designed homes in Florida.
Seriously, Steve, um, is making our new structure, that's for sure. And so somewhere new, so this is a view. That's a good wow.
It's a good wow.
All right, so this is, again, going.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it looks like an East Beach.
Yeah, so I'm trying to riff off of some classic each move, each house moves, but. So the biggest change to what I presented before was, um, just a consistent, um, cedar shake for the upper portion. This brow that's making the opening. You, if you've seen the house, there's this very funky but cool sort of, um, wooden plank door that we're keeping. It was deeded that we cannot change that door. We are changing the windows because they're all right, and so that's, that's the thing that's advanced, uh, all the upper floor windows are new. We simplified this profile, it used to have some more articulation, we just simplified it. We also changed this railing to do that kind of manual railing. This is that addition to the size, so we're just keeping this plain, essentially, right? And, um, and the shed itself to the side, or just trying to be as close to what is there now as possible, which is a kind of a, a flat roof, uh, a low-slope roof shed. From the water side, this is from the, uh, northwest, looking back at the house. So most critically is this addition, so this is a portion that's new. So you can see we have, uh, the upper portion of the house is the cedar shake, the roof getting new shake as well. This is a stair tower, so we dropped the cedar shake to kind of call out the fact that it has a landing there. So if you're wondering why this is kind of jumping up and around, it's trying to tell, you know, what's going on from the inside as you rebound outside. Uh, this is that new opening, so there used to be a recess here and a porch up here. We enclose this porch, put in this window, uh, a series of windows, and then have a sliding door in the, uh, the kitchen just behind here. Uh, this is all as is, but we're changing out, uh, right now, there's a series of windows and sliders here. We're replacing it with new stuff, so it's just a simplified thing. Um, and right now, there's a small window here, we're making it a little bigger, so you can actually see the sunset. And other key pieces we're adding to, uh, skylights on the front of the building here on that roof. I mean, that's, that's where I am.
Seems nice. So what's the question? Are there any questions?
No, I just think it's handsome.
It looks like, almost like a thatched cottage in a way, which is kind of, which is great.
Yeah. It is whimsical, whimsical.
Pines be in the wolf's hole.
In a way.
Um, is there a problem? Because we, we're talking about like foundation materials, though.
No, this is pre-existing.
Okay, because I, I love the way it looks.
And, and it's, and, and, and the addition is, is still, it's still the pre-existing stuff. So we're not looking for, we're not looking for a change, right?
I think that's, that was a key or a catalyst for the design, to, um, you know, how do you, unless you start over, how do you make an addition to this house or redo this house, and you can't, you just have to work off of.
Right, but if you, if you had more of the, the side, the, the shake siding, it would have been too much.
I agree with you, actually. John and I discussed that, I, I think his daughter, who is very opinionated about this house. I have three clients, I'm John, and Simon, and Todd, they're both adults, of course, and they're, uh, they are like, let's make it an all-shake house. And I just told him, you know, the coolest thing about this house is the fact that it is an all-shake, you have some dynamic, you have some play off of the base. And also, uh, you're, you know, there's something that I did, the original architect had.
It would be too much if it was.
It's too much. You've done a lot.
Yeah. But this does, this does have a silver patina, because it gets all that saltwater from the north, northeastans. And so it's really very silvery. It's a beautiful house. So, um, any comments, any corrections, any improvements?
It can't be improved on.
Okay. So I will, I will. Well, we got a couple more to come here. Um, so I will, uh, move that we approve the plans as presented for twenty-five Terry Drive.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the next person, uh, or, or presentation we're looking for? Okay. Is seventy-six Meredith Avenue?
Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Davis, how are you?
Ron Davis, fine. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
William. Um, and with me online is Stephen Connors, the architect. We're asking for application for certification to appropriate this. Um, the owner is Lindsay Roberts. I happen to be the builder. And we have ordered the survey, a new survey, which you don't have in the package that I dropped off in December. The test hole, but I've ordered a new survey. Test hole has been completed, and the site engineer hasn't given the information yet to the surveyor. And of course, that will then we'll submit that. Can we all see the drawings that we have here?
We had the rendering too.
Okay, so like, maybe I'll start with, uh, the survey, any person, any questions on the survey that I have, existing, the existing home has a square footage of two thousand eight hundred and forty. Of course, we're asking for five hundred ninety-nine or six hundred square feet with this ADU. And I'm gonna start, I guess, with the basement. Nine feet with centers, excuse me, uh, ceiling that we're looking for, tap and crossface. And then we move up to the.
Different from this?
Now, that's a survey.
I think you could talk mostly about the exterior of the house, you know, the floor planes or anything.
And so we have the drawings for the first floor, and of course, the elevations that you require. And I'm gonna turn it over to, I guess, any questions that you might have for Stephen. Stephen, can we hear you? Are you online?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we've been looking forward to hearing you. Very good.
We've been looking at you, obviously.
I have a problem with my connection, it keeps going in and out, it'll freeze up, and then I'll lose sound.
Rapidly forward, and we might.
Quick, Ron, maybe if you can call me on your phone, we could have that as a backup.
Yes. So any questions that I might that you would like to ask me?
If this is twenty five hundred square feet and you're adding.
Five ninety nine.
Oh, sorry, okay. No, 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 I mean, the house is. And now he's building a new thing. And so the two together don't count as a one amount of square footage, right?
Yeah, that's lot coverage, but this is an A D.
Okay, okay, so, so let's, let's just every.
Why don't you explain that this is our first accessory?
Right, that's exactly what I'm gonna do.
Okay, good.
So recently, I think it was in summer, the village passed a law in, in, in respect to affordable housing. To say that we could have auxiliary dwelling units on our property. The maximum size is six hundred square feet, which is why this is designed for five hundred ninety nine square feet. The ADUs can either be a separate entity like this, a separate structure. It could be in the, in the basement of an existing building. And the reason for that is that it just allows you to have separate sanitary facilities and cooking facilities, right? So this is in, this is in response to the village's need to increase our density and have more people able to afford to live here. And this happened to be submitted before the zoning overlay code was submitted for the African American communities here, the historic Black Beachfront Community zoning overlay district code, which prohibits these units. So this was done before the deadline of the effective date of the code, not when it was passed, but the effective date of the code. So that is, that is the, what should I say? That is how we should be reviewing this. Okay. The context is the words looking for of how we should be reviewing this. So does anybody have any questions or any thoughts about it?
I guess I'm, I'm looking at this and I don't see where the actual house is in comparison to the proposed dwelling. So I'm just wondering where on the lot is this auxiliary dwelling going to be? Oh, I thought that was a pool. I get it now.
Okay.
Says proposed A D U.
Yep, I didn't read it.
Are the materials there matching the, the main house?
Yes. Sorry. Yes.
What, what is that? Can I ask? What's that?
It's stained cedar.
Oh, it is.
No, it's just kind of.
Don't should say it on the plan.
It's, it's noted on the elevations.
It's not called out in the elevation.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It says stained cedar siding to match.
Yeah, it's in this elevation.
Oh, 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 I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, so is it gonna be stained to match?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is all we have.
Yeah.
But you have more. Okay, good. If it says it there.
It's just a technical one.
Well, you guys go want to look at this? Does anyone have any questions? Any comments?
Is it for rent?
Really?
Oh, is it? Ron, that's Mr. Davis.
Yes.
They like the design. They want to know if it's gonna be for rent.
It's gonna, what?
If your auxiliary dwelling unit is gonna be for rent, but I understand you're not ready to put on the market yet.
No, no, but that's for the owner's mother and fathers and their friends.
That's wonderful. Okay, so any, any comments, any questions and a motion to approve seventy six Meredith Avenue, I'll second. All in favor? All opposed? None, so unanimously, unanimously approved.
Thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. I was not present much that I'd lost my feet again, but thank you.
Yes.
No, that's okay. You're the most succinct architect we've ever dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Good night.
All right, so while we're waiting, I think this is probably a Zoom submission. Twenty Meredith Avenue, is anyone to, to represent twenty Meredith Avenue? Join once twenty Meredith Avenue?
And just so you know, fifty nine Glover Street is, is here now, so it's actually a second call.
Okay. All right, so I, I, whatever. That we, that we tabled twenty Meredith Avenue, twenty Meredith, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Hmm?
Two-person committee, so we'll you there and bring more information.
The next three, you mean?
Nope, one eighty four is here. I do not know about ninety seven.
Okay, so the next applicant we're calling is one eighty four Redwood Road. Are you here and available to us? Oh, we somebody person, how nice. And please give us your name and.
My name's Edgar Prazim. I'm an architect for Berchworth. And, yeah, I presume you can look at the drawings. It's on a different town. We're proposing to replace an existing roof over the portion of the house facing the water with a proposed balcony for the second story. The first page photographs. Replace the siding and trim as needed when we're doing the window work. And we're hoping to repaint the house and then more harder spray.
I want to compliment you on this, even I could understand this presentation. This, this was the shortest review the other day I had. So, so. Okay, so your point here with the blue line is that you're really showing us that you're not doing an expansion to the house, right? So this is just a paint and upgrade and window change for the most part and some deck. You modify the deck material.
The, the deck material, well, existing, it's mahogany and we would just replace that in kind. And also for the second store balcony, second story balcony, we'd also use mahogany for that.
Okay, are there any thoughts or comments?
Okay, so it's Marvin.
This is not.
It's a fiber glass window.
Okay.
And, and so you are facing, the decks are facing the water. And that's just what I was gonna ask. This, this is a representative image here of the screening of the.
Tall evergreen trees on the property line adjacent, yeah.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
The front of the house is where the Velco doors are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have any plans to change that. Yeah, also there's a lunette windows that are existing on the main body of the house. We're hoping to turn that into a round window.
I think that's better.
Okay.
It's a nineteen fifty house, according to the.
I, I like the color change also.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve these modest changes.
I move to approve one eighty four Redwood Road.
One eighty, that's what she said.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh, okay. So. Yeah, second, all right. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. If anybody hasn't been counting, you do better when you see us in person. Ninety seven Glover Street?
That's interesting.
Is there anyone here for ninety seven Glover Street to present for an outdoor light?
Oh, yeah, this is interesting.
This is an interesting thing. It really is. So it's, it, it's a dramatic change in the style and look of the light and it's, it is in the historic district.
It is there and it's been there for years.
This light was already there.
They never got approval. Just wait for some.
Oh. Oh, for heaven's sake.
But you have to see the picture.
Yeah. That was the original.
It's like an aspirin.
I thought it was, I thought it was a hard-boiled egg.
Well, what about the dark sky businesses? It's light pointing straight up, right?
With that light?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say change it back.
No, no, they've been unhappy for a very long time.
Yeah, the light's called Cristo Romo.
So are we allowed to say, well, I guess we make a motion not to accept this light?
Yeah, I, we, first of all, I don't think, does it have the lumens or anything on that? I don't see it.
Just wattage, no, so.
Not a contributing property in the historic district.
It isn't?
It's not in the.
I went to look at.
It may be in the district, but.
It's not contributing.
Oh, and Glover?
Seven Glover.
That's just.
Would ninety seven be like way down at the end?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I, okay, that makes sense. So it's not historic. So they.
Still.
So. I don't know that we have authority to do anything other than to suggest.
Let's make a move.
Well, I, you know, I, I say to some people that we're like an H O A, right? That we, we do say to people like, we don't like this, can you change it? Most of them do. And so I don't think that this is asking them for too much. So there's a couple valid questions. Number one, the village is moving to dark skies, as you pointed out.
Right.
Does this comply with that policy? And number two, it's inconsistent with the architecture of the area. And we could ask them to do something more consistent, which would be a return to the original light that they replaced, right?
Although that might
just over.
It, it is, doesn't really go if, since this is not a historic house and this is a light that's trying to be historic looking, it doesn't really go.
There are so many lights that look like that around Sag Harbor. Why?
Because it's, it's not a historic Sag Harbor house. It's just a, like a.
Yeah, but it resembles, yeah, historic Sag Harbor aesthetic.
Yeah, I honestly, I have lights on the post that look like this.
I would rather that light than.
Exaggerated too.
So we're gonna ask them.
I would like a smaller one.
Yeah, this is over size, I think, too.
It looks awfully big.
Right.
So we ask them to come back with this.
Yeah, we'd, we'd like who's ever representing this to truly consider something in this motif, a little smaller and, and that would be compliant with the dark skies.
So you like the older one?
A smaller. Older one.
Do not like the new one?
Correct.
Right.
Newish.
And also, we don't know if it complies with, with the dark sky idea.
Great. So you want to know all the specs and everything?
The more they can tell us, the better.
They'll come back with something that's just said, can it be a two, two-person?
Yes. Well, it could have been anyway, but you, but you guys didn't want to take the weight.
No, I, I don't think that could have been a two-person.
I mean, it was pretty conclusive.
We wanted to hear from everyone.
Unanimous.
So it's tabled. So we're tabling into the ninth meeting and it's called, tell them they want, that you guys like the old one and a smaller version.
Right.
So we're gonna make the motions table.
I will.
Second, all in favor? All right, the last on our list is thirty one Hamilton Street.
Second to last.
And we, and you also said we have the one on Lincoln. Let me say that there on.
I just think that fifty nine Glover and thirty one.
I thought you said Fuller Love was here. Okay, so we're going back to the, the tables and I'm gonna read them. If they're not responsive, let them be tabled to the next meeting. So we have an agreement on that.
Well, they already are tabled.
Well, I mean, if I'm gonna read, I'm gonna second call everybody.
All right, we're going back.
Okay.
I'm here for thirty one Hamilton.
Okay, let's do that and then let's do.
Yeah, yeah.
It's thirty one Hamilton, old business.
Yeah, it's new business, last one.
Number ten. Yes.
Oh, just called it.
But they wanted some more planting, some.
All right, you want to take this? Oh, did you identify yourself, sir?
Yes, my name is Fernando Gonzalez. I'm the architect for the property. This is for Ellen Morton, who is the homeowner. They are, they have a beautiful little lot, plot of plan land, right outside the historic village, but they're still kind of in the village and they are proposing a pool. As of now, there's more plans. The idea is to eventually maybe do a full house, but right now they're looking to just do the pool. And so that's what we're proposing. Were there any questions? When I last submitted, they asked if there would be more landscaping to kind of hide the pool from the street. Their property is very open to the street as it is right now. They do have a row of hedges on the front of the property. And we are proposing to kind of continue the hedges where they kind of die off towards the, that would be the south end of the street. Wrapping that driveway and then also have a row of hedges in front of the pool, a couple feet. And there's a, in the updated plans, there's a little image on the upper left. And I'm happy to share my screen if that helps. I think everything, everyone can see this.
Yeah.
So the existing house is on the north end of the property. And their driveway is all the way on the south end. And in between, they're proposing a pool. And with some new hedges. And with some new hedges. So I've kind of identified the existing is kind of in a dark green and the new hedges would be in a light green. So it'd be this row here and then we would continue some landscaping here so that's less visible from the street.
Yeah, that was where, what we looked at the other day.
Yes, I think someone had reviewed it and had some comments back to us. Um, I updated it with this and then when I asked the clients, they agree they do want to kind of keep it hidden, a little bit more private from the street. And they kind of sent me this image. As kind of an inspiration of what they're looking for. So there's a hedge here and that would represent kind of this hedge along here. So that anyone from the street.
For, thank you to you and to them for listening to us and I will make the motion.
Second.
With the appropriate landscaping.
Well, it's what's on the.
All, any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Welcome. Now can I go back?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, second call. Is there anyone here for fifty-nine Glover Street? There is?
Yep.
Okay. And who are you? And please identify yourself.
Mr. Mason.
Hi, this is Charles Mason from Motion Building Corp. We're the builders for the project.
Hello.
Hello. So I'm here representing the homeowners, um, Troy and Erin Levine.
So tell us a little about the project, Mr. Mason.
Um, so we are, this is just phase one of the project of fifty-nine Glover. We want to, um, uh, do it two-car garage. Eventually the whole house will be renovated, but that's still in permitting process. Um, I can, do you have the prints there or I can share them?
Share.
You have them right here.
Send that one down there.
I hope I can share them. No, it's disabled. I can't share them. I'm sorry.
Hold on a minute.
So it's a, it's just a two-car garage. It'll be a yellow, uh, yellow cedar painted white on the, uh, on the walls and then, uh, hand splint, uh, cedar shakes on the, uh, the roof. Um, Marvin, uh, custom windows indoors.
We're trying, we're trying to catch up with you here.
I'm sorry, say again?
We're trying to catch up with you here. We're, I'm on A, we're on A one hundred. So proposed construction plan.
I'm sorry, it's a single car garage. Um, and the other projects are two-car. This is a single car garage.
So you have numbers on this page, age one hundred.
Yep.
Where is that? Where's the garage?
It should be on the second page, uh, A one hundred.
So number one and two are the proposed construction plans. And foundations. Three is the roof. Does this relate? Or is exterior on the north side? So we can't see that.
Right. There is a survey somewhere.
Well, the survey's not. If, do we have an image of the house?
Of the house itself? Uh, I do not.
I'm only bringing that up because this is in the historic district. It's a contributing building, a house. And therefore I would suggest that the board would like to see the architecture of the garage relate in some way to the house.
You know, I might be able to bring it up. Hold on one second. So the, the existing house is impermit, uh, impermit processes, uh, to be renovated. Um, Stephen Gambrell will be the, uh, designer on that, that house and, uh, Marcus's architecture will be, um, be the architect.
So we've ju, we haven't seen it yet. We've just seen.
All right, give me one second here. Let me see if I can bring that up.
Let me ask you something. When you say renovated, you mean interior only?
No, exterior as well.
So that would be an application. Yeah.
The, the, the applications in process.
Yeah. Not just like.
They don't have to though.
No, they don't.
So that.
Unfortunately, I do not have the plans, uh, digitally to share with you for the, the house.
We don't need the plans as much as we just need.
The style.
The picture of the outside of the house.
But he said he can't show that to us. Well, the nomination.
He couldn't show us the point.
Nomination was drives it as dating from eighteen sixty-five to seventy-five, which is in between. One and a half story, three bay frame residence, one over one window. So those have been replaced. Shingle, this simple cottage has a side entrance, a rear yard. Can't really read too much from this description, what the style is. It doesn't seem to have a style. You know, this proposal might be entirely appropriate. It's just that it ultimately, the tail, in my estimation, as grandma would have said, the tail is wagging the dog here. Because if the garage is approved, now that's gonna, that's gonna anticipate a compromise in the terms of what's possible with the house.
They just.
In other words, it will.
They just did this thing now.
And it really should be the other way around. Shouldn't the garage relate to the house? Not, but I'm just, just in a logical sequence.
Anyway, it, it, the garage doesn't seem to relate to that.
No, it's, it's attractive house.
So how do you do that?
Listen, Megan is like. We've got the house.
Okay, good.
Oh, is it the?
It looks like that house is redone recently.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's gonna be brought back to, uh, more of a Sag Harbor style house. Stephen Gambrell is the designer on the house and has a lot of influence on what the new house is gonna, uh, look like. He's the, like I said, the designer and Marcus works hand in hand with him. And it's Stephen's neighbor, so, uh, it will definitely be brought back to historical Sag Harbor Village.
So who knows?
He's done quite a few houses around Sag Harbor.
Yes. So in that, that garage style has actually been approved at fifty-six Glover across the street, which we're, um, doing the, almost the identical garage, but it's two-car garage. Uh, and like Stephen Gambrell's house at fifty-three Glover has almost the identical garage in fifty-three girl, fifty-two Glover across the street as well. All the garages are in that vintage look of.
Are all the primary houses, are all the main houses of the same architectural style too?
Yes.
Because we're looking for context here. The effects of the garage is all the same is, is not.
Yeah, the houses all are in that same architectural style as well.
I, I'm, I, I would suggest that we wait until the other is submitted and we do this together. I know we don't have to, but.
I agree. I think we all, I, I agree too. I didn't feel Megan about this.
I'm sorry, I did not hear what the, uh, proposed.
We, we would like to wait until the house is also brought to us, the proposal for the house, before we weigh in on the garage. We want to do it as one.
Package.
Package in sight.
Well, the homeowner is trying to move along with the project, um, in phases. So they're just trying to get the garage done at this point.
So then you can, you can show us the, the plans at least, what you plan on doing with it next time and we can.
Okay.
Then go ahead with, uh, the garage. We can approve the garage.
Once we know for sure what the, the house project is going to look like.
Okay, all right.
I think we'll agree as, I'll move that we table this till we can have more, more, um, context. Second?
Oh, second.
In favor? Opposed?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So real quick, uh, so just so unclarified for next meeting, you want a set of blueprints for the house itself?
We want blueprints and we want renderings. We, this is.
Renderings, okay.
Someone used it, someone used the, the term tail wagging the dog. We want to know what the long-term plan is so we can look, have a contextual, uh, understanding.
Okay. Okay.
And it's, it's not so much plans as we need to know what the outside of the house is gonna look like. We don't care about the inside.
Right, yeah, we, the interior renovations outside of our purview.
Right.
So we're just really looking at the exterior and how these two will mesh together.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay, this is second call for fifty-five Lincoln Street. Is anybody here to represent fifty-five Lincoln Street?
Elizabeth Gilbert, are you here for a project?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you, just checking.
Okay, so that will be tabled. I move that we table this to the next meeting. We did it? Okay, so I was second calling. So, all right, then forty-one Glover Street. Is anyone here to represent forty-one Glover Street? Going once, going twice, table to the next meeting. Uh, all I have on the other, well, we have two others. Twenty Meredith, second call on twenty Meredith. Anyone here to represent them? Okay, tabled ninety-seven Glover. Anyone here to represent ninety-seven Glover?
We already tabled that one out with the, uh, lights.
Yeah, he's doing. Oh, that's the lights? Okay, so that's good. Then we're done. Yeah.
Motion to close the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for your time and your good moves.